...
And it's Bear Petrovich.
Bear Petrovich.
Bear.
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 Okay.
Item three is public comments. Is there any comments the public would like to make? If you see, especially correspondence or something else that you're involved in and you'd like to wait, but it's time for the public to be thinking.
Um.
Yes, Mayor Justin.
Yeah, I'm sorry if I just wanted to talk about sidewalk damage.
Um, well, we have some correspondence. You could do it now and don't want to stay for later.
Well, I have to stay all the way to the end. I can see sidewalk on here. I just saw, you know.
Well, we have it in correspondence.
Yeah.
We have it in correspondence.
Number eight.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, but usually we don't discuss correspondence.
Yeah.
So, I'll say what I want to say, but how's that?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. I would like for the board to consider, I've asked this probably since the day I heard that the grant was written, that they finish up the sidewalks on my side of the street from Ridge Street up to what would be the Melton Church Park. Um, definitely, it's very uneven. There are broken things that are there, and we've been told that if there's any money left over, not to be considered, or it could be a community bill, but I think it would be nice if we could do that all in this one project. What I notice is people are using the sidewalk on South Street from Schoolhouse to Wigg. They are really enjoying it. As soon as they hit that intersection, they get in the street. And I think that first block of South Street is a very dangerous thing because people kind of whip around that corner from 96. And if you're right there in the street, it's not just, you know, the four of us that live on that block, that are that side that are affected. There are people who come locking their children to the nursery school. There are people from the food bank, people that go to the church, people that are going to the library. So, it's heavily trapped, but most of the time they're in the street. Even though we try to keep our blocks cleared, we're below grade, and so water comes down there in the pits, basically. Ice is over, and people have fallen. It's a problem. I would just like, if we're gonna have it, just have it, you know, start on that side and go all the way in, I just think that would be a good idea.
I would like to confirm, with Mayor Justin, Kathy Puffer, here at One Way Street, I would just like to confirm what Janet says, that sidewalk is treacherous. If you're pushing strollers, dragging kids, locking on ice, locking on smell, because people go to the library a lot that way, or just down in the street.
So, if it, yeah, if it does come under budget and we, our next year's budget will be outside of money allocated, and it could go for something like that. I bet with them, or they have something else, and he's interested in doing something this year, and so that, as long as DFW, with EEW's help, uh, we'll be fine.
That's an issue. I know that James, who was, I'm telling you, who lives on the corner, said, you know, if DFW could help with frames, et cetera, that we probably could organize some people. But a lot of the people that volunteer for these kinds of things are over 70 years old, you know? So, it's not ideal for the old people in the neighborhood to be out there pretending like they know what they're doing.
Did you say that James didn't do nothing?
Yeah.
Yeah, cool. He's the one that did everything, so, okay.
Yeah, cool. So, I talked to all four people on the side and asked them to write, and probably none of them did, but only that they thought was a good idea. I'm the only one with slate sidewalks. Everybody else has broken and eased cement. But slate sidewalks are treacherous when they wet.
Yeah.
Especially on ice. And people that are falling in front of me.
Any other public comments? Okay, if not, we'll move to item four, a public hearing for proposal to law one of 2018, a local law providing the flexibility and ability to override the tax leviation established by General Municipal Law Three dash C. So, I'm going to take a motion to open the public hearing.
So.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, stated, passes. Uh, so this is a time for the public to comment on proposal to law number one of 2018. Okay, twice, for the public to comment on the law number one of 2018. All right, three times. Okay, any comment on entertain a motion to oppose the public hearing?
So.
There's another motion, second over there.
Aye.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, stated. So, if someone would like to make a motion to approve law number one of 2018.
I'd like to approve law number one of 2018, providing for the possibility and ability to override the tax leviation limitations.
Okay, motion second, any discussion? Okay, not all those in favor say ayes.
Aye.
Opposed, stated, passes. All right, item five, report from department heads. We have a limited list of department heads here today, and so, Vicki, you want to go first? It looks like you have some.
Sure, I have two premises referendums, uh, well, premise of referendum, I'm sorry, premise of referendum, there's like a lot of tension. The first one was premise of referendum in regards to closing the mutually reserved one that we discussed at the last budget hearing. I talked to Dwayne, he said it's not, it's not a big deal at all. I believe that you said, that you said that you guys wanted to go to unappropriated fund amounts, which Dwayne told me what to do. Right as of February 28th, the balance in the account is $49,860.49. The premise of rest referendum is to close that account in 30 days with accrued interest.
And move to the general fund, is that right, Paul?
Well, yes, it'll go to the general fund, and it'll go to unappropriated fund balance.
That's great.
Okay, so would someone like to make a motion for the premise of referendum?
Yeah.
Second. Any discussion? Okay, not all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, stated, passes.
The second one is a budget modification to represent the discussion during the budget meeting for the appropriations of $25,000 to the planning, for planning for, for appropriated spending, to be offset with unassigned fund balances.
So.
I move that we do a budget logic modification to move $25,000 to the planning from unappropriated fund balance.
Second. Okay, any discussion? Okay, not all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, stated, passes. So, anything else?
No, um, you know, I mean, I'm like a, you know, budget, 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 budget.
We'll go get the budget, please. We'll get the budget.
I think there's a budget, budget.
So, Dusty's here, and if you want to just have a brief report, since you're physically here.
Yes, sir. Hello. Just stuff we've accomplished in the last month. We fixed three more water breaks, two on South Street, one over in front of the post office. No major problems there, just typical cold weather. We also did some repair work down in the older pump houses to replace some older valves that were in the repair to help with the system. The new tank mixers were installed earlier this month. We had some trouble with the electrical components of those. Gritty came in and fixed them, which caused some dirty water there for a couple days right afterwards, but we took care of that, and the problem should be fixed. We haven't noticed any more water flowing up out of the electrical conduit from those answers. We did some assisting with the Smith Woods vents within the last week, so they could get that project finalized. And pretty much kept up with snow for the last few months. And that's about it.
Any questions or comments for Dusty?
That's a lot of in break.
Eight on the year. We're still on the normal. Tomorrow, the last two years have been really light. Three, I think each of the last years, and then the two previous to that, we had 1250, so we're right about in range for what we only have.
So, no other department heads, and we can move on.
Should I officially, okay. We should officially recognize that Dusty is the new DFW supervisor? And has been since, I don't know, I guess. Twenty seconds. Thanks, Dusty.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. That brings us to the force of representatives, so I see Anna and Nancy, and I don't know which one wants to go first.
Sure. So, a couple things, thanks, Mary. The, for the county jail, we've added some staff, which we've been trying, we got a project to share, but we've actually added them now, some more mental health staff. So, that is good, onsite. And the airport, you might have heard about before, we've been trying to, we have proposed expansion, and that's looking a little bit more likely. Been meeting with some folks in Albany, so hopefully that'll go through, and they can add another ramp, so, external ramps, and that'll help a lot. And we're looking at trying to have the addition, plus the whole airport facility go geothermal for heating and air conditioning. So, there's some grants out there right now, and a large part having to do with Dryden, since they're not having a new pipeline come through, through Dryden to Lansing. NICE take is offering some incentives to have places go off of natural gas to help lessen the load, so that, since Lansing's gonna be getting less gas. So, we're looking at that. And one big thing I would like to pass on here is March 24th, so that's not this coming Saturday, the next Saturday. I don't have the time here, they change the time sometimes, but there's a Facebook page, they're having a march or a gathering downtown, and maybe I'll look it up while Nancy's talking.
I think it's at two.
It's at 2:00 on the Commons, and it's in solidarity with the, there's the kids down in Florida where they had.
The 25th, right?
24.
24.
24, 2:00 on the Commons.
It was 10, and now it's 2.
Now it's 2, right.
Thanks, Mary. Okay, good, thank you. Any questions for Nancy? Thank you. Yeah, Nancy.
Yeah, I, um, I'm sorry to report that the joint fire EMS meeting that we were trying to pull together for this coming Wednesday is not gonna take place, and some of our efforts at rescheduling have been challenging, so that will be, reschedule it another time. I'll be sending an official notification tomorrow for the cancellation, so that everybody knows this is going on. We will. Sorry that we couldn't make that work, but, um, sort of community announcement that the town has been involved in advising, the Community Science Institute holds a series of water quality workshops around the county. And when I saw the one that they were offering in Danby, I asked if they would do one for the town of Ulysses, and they are planning one for next Wednesday, March 21st, at 5:30 at the Philamatic Library. And basically, they review what you need to know about your water, how can you test if your water is safe, if you're on a public system, because it's relative for building residents as well as those in Jacksonville. If you're on a public system, what are they testing for? So, it just increases everybody's general knowledge about water quality and what you can do to get your water tested if you're not in a public system, and sort of how to protect yourself and your family. So, 5:30 to 7:00, March 21st, at the library, 5:30. At the library here, in the building, Philamatic.
That's great.
Yeah. Yeah, and, you know, they're doing it, and I'm sure they rotate them around, but there should be posters going up about it, so that's pretty open for the public. In terms of the town board itself, at our meeting tomorrow night, we've got a bunch of things on the agenda, but one I'm happy to report, that you've been hearing for literally years about our efforts to acquire itself, the church in Jacksonville, and tomorrow we expect to act on an offer that will more than cover the costs that we have invested in acquiring and maintaining it. And so, if all the conditions and contingencies all work out, we may in fact be achieving our goal of having that historic building move into hand of a private person willing and able to renovate the exterior and repurpose the interior. So, that's a good thing, but there's still a couple, you know, a couple I's, a couple T's to cross, but we have an offer in hand, and we, our, some unforeseen circumstances, except to expect to accept that tomorrow night. So, we've been busy filling seats on our plan, zoning boards, and making sure we have alternates for those. We've had a version of controversy and concern over the fact that there is a development district in the town, in Boyceville, where Moore's Marine Service is. It was something that years ago was agreed to be allowed in an, what was that, an agricultural area, now sort of transitioning to be a residential area. And a business sort of smacked in a little there, and they've been making some changes that put them out of compliance, and the first round of effort was to see whether the rules for the development district could be adjusted to bring them into compliance. But we held a public hearing two weeks ago, and members of the community who lived near there had a lot of concerns, who weren't aware of initially, and that's going back to the planning board, and we're gonna figure out how to, fit the needle of helping small business operate safely and, while not intruding on their neighbors, and address the neighbors' concerns as well. So, that's something we've done. Another one that's less, kind of, sort of a change. Our zoning project continues. That will, I think, in the next few months, be working its way from our zoning update committee to our town board, and we're gonna be doing some homework to try to prepare for what the process might look like once it arrives at the town board, because I think we will not have something that all segments of the community agree with, and so we will try to figure out how to reconcile some of those conflicts between the concerns that have been identified largely by the department community, but some other segments of the community, as we try to figure out how to protect, tag land by reducing development, but in ways that don't reduce people's ability to sell their land when they need to, for either refinancing their farm operations, or when they're much older, selling off their version of a 40K, well, okay, for their retirement. So, it's, there's strongly no feelings on all sides, and so we will be embarking on that in a few months. But I think those are the highlights to listen to this.
Any questions or comments for Nancy?
Do you know what they plan to do with the church? If you can talk about it.
An excuse, I'll just say that. No, I think almost all, almost all, we actually, we showed it over 40 times, we actually had four offers, and I believe the concept is to have a residence and then yet-to-be-determined other use. And we did actually take a step of asking anybody who was bidding on it, the town developed like five questions that we asked people to say, how does your proposed, we asked what the proposed uses would be, how do those relate to our comprehensive plan and the character of the handling? How we envision doing the, complying with the exterior historic preservation restrictions as well as the environmental, I mean, it's a challenging property for anybody to take on, to evolve its history. And then asking people, you know, about their financial qualifications and sort of what their timeframe was. And so, out of those four offers, we, using those questions, we developed, because it's a small town, we wanted to try to keep this as clean as possible, and we developed a set of criteria and assigned scores for that, established a minimum score beyond which we wouldn't sell even if we had an offer. And we got, so the proposals ranked each one according to the criteria, and the one we're expected to accept tomorrow had shared the highest price and had the highest score. So, more to be determined. If in fact there continues to be, then your job to the community will certainly assist them in any way to do that, but what they end up doing as a private owner, as long as it conforms with our zoning, will be up to them. If they want to come in, we can help them with that, or we can help the community talk there. So.
How long has the town owned that piece, Bill?
Only since July of 2017. It took three years to negotiate to get it, but we closed down in July of 17, so while we would have liked it to have sold in months, it actually is pretty good, I think, when we had months later, practically. So.
All right, any other questions or comments for Nancy? Yes, go ahead.
Okay. I just wanted to thank Nancy again for working so hard for three years to get that property, because I live on Swamp College, so close to Jacksonville, and so the devastation that's been caused in that area because of the original gas bill and all that, so I'm speaking for myself, for the other people around that area, so thank you for working so hard to get that property saved.
Yeah, it's a bit of a relay race. The community did its best to try to do it, the town, Nancy entered sort of late in the process, and Rich Goldman and I were sort of the point people on, it was really sort of, was the first one to lead the charge, and then it just sort of all came on, so thank you.
Um, I see Jason's back there. We don't have a lot of department head reports, but since you're here, if you're.
Sure, I just, I don't have much other report, other than the report. I think I emailed you, Gordon, and Rachel, the drawing, fuzzy drawing, I'm gonna put it, and the estimated price. I, the drawing is not anything set in stone, it's just an idea he came up with, and like I text Rachel a little while ago, he's not gonna put a lot of time into it, because it's all his own time that he's doing this work right now until I think the village commits or says we're gonna win where we are. So, that's all on his own time, that he did that, to provide that. The new truck that we got back in August, the damage it was done, it's up getting fixed as we speak, should be back this week. And then the ladder truck is going back to Buffalo, and that one gets back, because the generator quit one more time, and they finally found what they think the problem is, and it needs to go to their shop to actually fix it, you can't go in-house. So, it's a lot of truck switching around. The new one, the mini pumper's ordered, going down April 4th to Pennsylvania to meet with the, uh, loss of production manager, whatever, to go over the specs and everything, and make sure it's all good when it comes in, to take it going. And other than that, how much work going on? Been training on a house down Route 89 that the Girl Scout camp used to use. Tom went down, Tom Myers, I did, went down. Ended up last week with Dan Shear to take a look at it, because they did ask to burn it down for them, to see if, whether there would be a possibility with asbestos and all that. Tom didn't look like there was anything, or had to contact the DEC now to follow their protocol. So, it's up to them whether we do it or not.
Good, I can play the wind in.
I couldn't, what she said?
The wind, wind, thank you.
Rachel came to the party meeting on Wednesday. I'll say to her publicly, thank you very much for looking after the party department. We appreciate it very much. And I kind of picked on her a little bit, that she's leaving just as she got to know what she was doing in the party department, and used to look at you doing, so, it's a joke between Rachel and I, but thank you very much for what you did for us.
You're welcome.
And I didn't think I was gonna be here. The other thing I mentioned to Rachel is, I guess, without me going any further, I guess, kind of got to decide where we want to go with this whole building project. I just need a plan or a view or something where to go, because I don't want to be unlingled like we were before. I guess I don't want to do all this work, and then all of a sudden say that we're not doing anything.
So, I'm wondering, now we have like a barely labeled sketch on the draft paper, which is fine, I guess a fine place to start. So, the idea is that we have a very rough estimate about how much he thinks it might cost.
Right, and that's the thing, I didn't get a chance to ask him, that number that he, you guys have, I don't know if that's completely finished, I don't know if that's for the building part, I don't know if that's for everything on the inside of it, I don't know, it was just a rough number, so, I think he probably just took a square footage number and did whatever a square foot cost and estimated what roughly the type of building.
Okay, and so if that number seems like a ballpark reasonable number, then you take the next step of asking him to come up, or someone else to come up with?
I think the next step's gonna cost money on the village board's part to engineering, like we did with MRB. This company has all their own people they work, but they have people they work with, they're not their own people, because they don't want to get in that bidding thing where it's being done so they automatically get it, I think.
So, we, so if we say you made, can you have construction with it, Paul?
I always get it wrong, it's, I think it's complete construction concepts, or it's construction, it's something, it's something like that.
I think we had it.
I always get it backwards.
Essentially paying him to do an engineering drawing and then putting it to it, to whomever, but he may be.
Yeah, I don't even know how much that costs, unless he put it in that one email, I can't remember.
He was $50,000.
He did.
I don't know what that $50,000 cost, I don't know if that part of that $450,000, I don't know, I don't remember.
I mean, I think we, I'll send it to you, it's like, it's, I mean, I think this is, the laundry room isn't even saying, you know, I was kind of shocked at how, like, basic it was, even, I know it's his own.
Well, it's kind of, I don't even know what he, what do you call it? It's like the decon room, where it has the gear washed, yeah, I don't think he labeled it. Well, I can get more detail on that cost, I don't know what it is. I don't know what it entails, I didn't get a chance to look. Yeah, so I, like I said, I wasn't prepared to be here, so.
Yeah, no, I'm, I am just a little surprised that it wasn't labeled, I guess. But I appreciate it anyway.
So I will email him tomorrow and get what that, whatever that cost was fifty thousand, what it entails, a breakdown of what that does. If that's what, if that's the price, I can't remember.
Yeah, so one of the, so fifty thousand dollars is the cost for full plans and bid set, the big package, ready for you to copy and put out to bid.
Well, so it's basically him doing everything for us then?
I guess he gave us a price under the assumption that he would be doing the work. But I guess of that fifty thousand dollars is the cost for the plans. So, right?
Yeah, I haven't got a chance to review it yet.
And I just, I don't know how much, like I don't know how much he wants to spend on it, so I don't know.
How about I just go back to him and did the details with all that and I'll come back next month?
Well, I think either way, we're still going to reach the point of having to decide how much he wants to spend on building. So.
Thank you.
We have our building reserve, we have, yeah.
I'm not naming out that one.
There's not building reserve money to build it, but there's building reserve money to make, take the next step at least. Do you, have you had a chance to investigate funding streams? I have, I have. I know there's no like theme or grant.
Because one thing we might consider is, I know that we don't want to keep pushing this off, but one thing we might want to consider is a polar of the, design specs, engineering drawings, funding applications, grant rating, kind of throw everything into the, throw everything into the pot a little bit, see if we can't get, I don't think we get a half dozen quotes, but see if we can get three or four. Because that would really answer all of the questions at once. I mean, we have to do it. It's a question of how we, whether we piecemeal it or try to, try to do it that way. But yeah, if you could get that info from him and then... Any other questions?
No, but I certainly, look, I don't know how business is done. Like he may be doing what he always did, and I was just a little surprised at how nuanced it was, but yeah.
I think it's very nuanced because we were trying to like, got back to the work and it was like, I kind of knew this for this time, we had to do something together.
Yeah.
Because I, I mentioned a couple of meetings, I was going to bring something to the board, that's kind of what I did. So for the month of February, it was a very slow side, or side on the fireside. There was four calls in the village, two lesses, one to Covert, one to Hector, one mutually, for a total of nine. There was twenty EMS calls to the village, twenty six lesses, eighteen to Covert, one to Hector, four to Interlake and five to Mecklenburg, three mutually, for a total of seventy-seven. Total turnout of two hundred and twenty-one, fire and rescue thirty-one point zero-three, EMS one seventy-one point five-eight, total hours four hundred and twenty-three point sixty-one, total calls eighty-six. And we're pushing twelve hundred as I, last I knew. I will say one thing about this mutually call, it's been my worst nightmare since I've been chief and it's having a fire on the lake. I saw firsthand load I back in the end of February. And the perfect reason why we're doing what we're doing with this new mini pump and the bigger pump. It was a long, long road down to the lake. Once they got their trucks down in there, they were stuck. They had the layho was down roughly six hundred feet to where they thought it was good enough to be able to bring trucks to pump water. Once the tankers pumped the water off, down the road to the other trucks, they headed back almost a quarter mile back out. So I, what I will say is that with the town and the code enforcement and the code enforcement, also whoever it is coming down to the fire department and giving our opinion on lake roads and where people are building and giving ideas, it is helping tremendously. We had the turnarounds and that type of stuff, it's just, they did a great job. That's why we're doing what we're doing with this new truck, to have a bigger pump in case that happens to us. But it was to actually see it now firsthand, it was, it was interesting.
Had they, so was load I the fire?
It was load I, yes.
Had they done that before? Was that their first try as well?
I don't know. I'm there, but I mean, that's my first one in a long time that I've been to that actually was a fire. So, that's all I got.
So Jason, when you were saying that building inspectors?
The code enforcement.
Code enforcement from which towns?
Yours. I said town, the town, town of U.S., I just said town of U.S.
Okay, I wasn't doing which town.
Yeah, when, when someone's starting to build on the lake now, they come to us and ask for turnaround to where we want them or whatever, because they're just not letting people build down there without having to act, they know what the importance is now, so it's helping.
No, we talked about trying to improve it because we had a couple situations and so, oh, good, I'm glad that's working. Thank you.
Is that working, is Covert doing the same thing or not?
Yes, I did mention it to the fire chief earlier, I said, you need to get the town, you know, you're, they do it by Seneca County most of it. So he said, yes, they're getting better and now they're working with them to have that, just like a spot for a truck to turn around is they can drive out because it's quicker to drive out than it is back out. It's just, I'm glad that the people that are driving trucks are experienced because it, it wasn't a straight back up, it was around corners and it was, it was tough.
Good. Any other questions or comments for Jason? All right, thank you. That'll move us to reports on commissioners. So Rachel, any more on fire?
Yeah.
Ben, EMS and U.S.
So Nancy, Gordon and I were at a meeting, a couple members from the school board, most of the town, or all of the town board was there.
Everyone was there.
All of them, yeah. And a few representatives from, from the very community rep. We didn't really go into any details, it was more just sort of meeting who the stakeholders from the various groups are. It was definitely, it was probably a really good, productive meeting even though there wasn't anyone. There was a few steps I heard, the school has property enough to build more fields behind, which I didn't realize. So that's the big, I guess we'll see how it goes. Hopefully there's a couple people who have offered, Liz offered to help write grants sort of privately. There's a number of next steps, so we'll see, see how that progresses.
The school would want you to clarify that while they may have land, they would not be financially, you're writing the cost of developing fields or attaching a building that could house a swimming pool or anything, but they might in effect don't have the land and maintain, maintain whatever gets built if somebody, you know, if you can fund it, they...
Right. And they did, I mean, they did say that it was possible that they might help with the maintenance if something was built in the neck, which was, I thought, more of an offer from the school, or not an offer, but it was more willingness from the school. They also talked about, they also talked about being willing to be the funding arm. There are current applications offered to require things like Tara mentioned, Adidas has large amounts of grant money, but it's only for existing programs. So if you look at schools, if they have sports program, that might be something they could take a tap into. It was, I thought it was really productive only because it wasn't all that long ago and the school wasn't interested, a different school board, different superintendent, but they weren't interested necessarily in participating in these types of community build type projects that use schooling. At least the one school board member and the superintendent last week seemed to be really eager to do, do something like this. Like actually eager, what can we do, what can we do next to help? That was definitely, definitely a question. I also, and Rachel, I don't know if you want to hear an update on the meeting earlier today, but we went to the meeting regarding the LED switch. And that definitely sounded like something we should pursue. One thing...
Generally LED switches are just the buy...
Right, and the buyback, buyback I guess is a, is a bigger piece of it, I think.
Yeah, it's in the same, like in terms of, yeah, I think there's the energy consumption piece, but then there's the incredible savings cities are, and other municipalities are realizing just by buying their lights back from my side.
And I was talking to the city electrician I guess who said that one of their lights that they had switched over earlier as part of a sort of small pilot program that the city did, went from costing about seventy dollars a month to costing six dollars, which is...
Wow.
Just, I don't know if that's representative, I mean, but, yeah.
So Dustin, I don't know exactly what that is, but we started switching over the lights down Main Street and just black street lamps.
Right.
To LED bulbs. I think we only have three changed at the moment. Excuse me, as the bals are going, we're replacing them with LED functioning bulbs, basically that have the built-in bals.
Has it realized that we don't?
I believe so. And so three of them have been switched, it's just been a matter of when they go, we're switching them now. I don't know whether they anymore to that, this meeting, but we have started doing something along those lines.
Yeah.
When it comes to switching our lights over.
Yeah, and this is, so this is a bigger project, I think. I mean, the city initially had offered to be, to do the installation and to do the whole thing. I think they backed off that it would probably be a contractor of some kind. But it still seems like something that's very much worth pursuing to my end. And Liz and Terry who were, well, they suggested that I check. I don't know if this can, or Marty would send in the request for NICE for their buying and... May I respond to it?
They responded by saying, basically, you're on the list. I don't know that we heard, but I can, I can email them.
So Liz suggested that we check for a follow-up email that was asking for a non-disclosure agreement that she apparently had missed for some time and just got, it blended in and was a weird email for some reason.
Okay. Non-disclosure?
Yeah.
It's been like four or five weeks.
Oh, yeah. It's October November easily.
And we, I mean, we only have one account, right? With us?
Well, we have one for the street lights, you know.
Uh, there's probably six or seven.
And there's the light at the sewer plant, or those, I think, those NICE.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, there's, I mean, there's several accounts that DTW, you know, the park, we rent the light.
We rent the light at the sewer plant.
Yeah. And the park, the DTW, we rent all the rest of it.
Yeah. Yeah. Tammy, if you have trouble finding that email, I know that the town did pass a resolution related to that non-disclosure, which seems really unnecessary to actually just talk to them about what these costs might be, but Carissa would probably be able to locate a resolution herself that backgrounds or...
It's definitely a bizarre agreement because it's obviously foillable information. But apparently NICE doesn't want municipalities to talk to each other during the negotiating process. So I, it's a...
Well, fair enough.
Right? Yes.
Been there for thirty-two weeks. So the buyback program is buying back the lights that we're renting, is that, okay, interesting.
And you can confirm that, yeah, that's, I mean, that's...
Got it.
All right. So it's a, it's a significant cost saver in the long term, but it's also, you know, energy efficiency is one of the...
Right. I just didn't understand who was buying what back from whom.
Right. Village buying back lights that we lease.
Is there, is there the potential to do a bulk buyback with the leases? And, I mean, I guess the light to do...
We have to negotiate on our own.
I think we have seven.
Right, but there's maybe like the city that...
I think so NICE is intentionally taking that on the table.
The man that was speaking today did talk about how that's worked and said, and he was, some, maybe those days are gone, you know, like...
Well, so one thing is that we can include Terry, who's been sort of the contact person. We can include him in our non-disclosure agreement, so he can see all of them. But he was describing his instructions from NICE and it was bizarre. They didn't, they wanted him to like, I don't know, partition drain or something, so they didn't, you know, old negotiators are, we never got this on. That's been very strange. Anyway, as far as EMS goes, I did look at the rates, Brian is unfortunately still back, so I haven't been able to do it in depth.
I want to go back to the lights for a little second, if you don't mind.
Sure.
I was just fascinated to hear some of the, I mean, I know that it's not super significant between, we're at a large city, you don't have like thousands of lights, but just the ability to, I don't know if this exists now or in the future, or if we even have the capacity to do it, but to be able to dim your lights after eleven P.M. by fifty percent to save, you know, more energy, I just think it's, it's a lot of opportunities for...
You can do that remotely, so you can set it up, so you can access your lights remotely. You can have a dimmer switch for the whole village.
Right.
Bizarre, or you can have it automatic, or you can have it based on motion so that if, you know, if one walks by in three hours or two hours, then they turn it off.
I would access to that.
I mean, that probably doesn't get access to that.
Definitely guys are going, I'm just thinking, maybe that was, maybe the freezes maybe and the light don't off. That's not good.
Gets hacked when somebody does things.
We can say our Chinese, okay.
Thank you.
So, okay, anything else?
Yeah. I did talk to, we did talk about, did you hear from him? He did not commit to it, he was back from...
I did talk to him this morning briefly.
Just be careful.
So I'm glad I did.
Okay, sorry.
But he's coming back in later in the week, so we'll, we'll talk to him. But I did look at our rates, I think, and I did get the technical net, so I have some of the broader information as far as our, the total building goes. I think that our rates currently should get us to our target. So I don't think that we have to change them. In order to get to your safety net, in order to, but we should celebrate. So that doesn't preclude a conversation about changing them and it becomes just a different kind of budget for us to work with.
That's actually helpful because what I forgot to mention is that the town, tomorrow night, we will be looking at our EMS rates and I could get more rates for more services directly from the MedX than the few figures that Brian gave that were comparisons. And we are looking to sort of possibly stay alive with the village, but if we, if you're planning...
We'll be a step ahead of them, I believe, but that's all.
Okay. So are you postponing any discussion about ways to encourage that?
Well, we don't need to have this part of the budget discussed. Oh, sorry, yeah. We don't have that. I mean, it's certainly not something I'd like to do unless we're pressed without talking to Brian in any case. I was gonna, I was trying to push it so we could have it for the budget, but I don't think we need to, so we'll wait until Brian answers.
Okay.
So that's the bottom.
DTW waters were?
I don't have anything, ooh, it's been late. It was time. We're ready to close out the water and sewer project. That'll be March twenty-first, I believe. The startup of the belt class will be March twenty-sixth due to David being engaged.
And it sounds like all the problems related to it are being grounded.
Yes, all the issues were pulled out and replaced with them.
And I'm meeting with Fred and Mary the twenty-third about the payment, the lease payment, and then what happens year, year after that. So we're all on the same page about...
It's always forty-three thousand dollars.
Yes, but then they pay us back and...
For maintenance.
Yes, yep, but yes.
Okay, all right.
Yes, but Fred wanted to meet with, about all that, so that's all about, yeah.
Okay. So that's it.
That's it?
Okay. So Gordon, police and health and surgery?
So police, there was an MOU with Skyler County that we tabled a couple of months ago, because I wasn't sure which MOU this was. We have a training MOU with Skyler County. This is an older MOU that we've had for our officers entering Skyler County, immediately becoming essentially deputized, Skyler County Sheriff's deputies for any incident in which they're there. It also covers them if Skyler County asks for assistance for large events like race. So there isn't any reason not to re-sign it. We've had this in place for years and years with Skyler. So I would like to, unless, even if there are questions, we can talk about it, I would like to move that we authorize Marty to sign this MOU with Skyler County Sheriff's Department if I need it.
All right. Any other discussion? If you have a question, please say aye.
Second police item is Officer Brian Golladay. He's currently still on employee-based probation as a, as a relative in Ohio plus, due to due to some, he's been an exemplary officer, and due to some timing to do with his age, we would like to end his probationary period earlier than normal, so that he doesn't lose some civil service rights, so to speak, that might phase out if his probationary period ends after his next birthday, which is coming up. So, it is as a courtesy to him, he's been a great officer. We would like him to retain all of his civil service police, potential future employment advancement, promotion capability that he would have if he comes on probation this month. So, with that said, I would like to make a motion that we remove Brian Jolly from the probationary period with the Village Transfer Police Department.
That's good.
So, how short is he from finishing?
About two, three months?
Yeah, it's, yeah.
It's a two-months.
How long is our probation period?
Sounds pretty close. Any other questions or comments? Okay, if not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those who stand on passes? The only other thing I have is Chief's report, since he's down here. If I can pull it up.
Hey, is this coffee now? Whoop, second call. God, how many has I made? Hundred and twenty-seven calls in February. Typical calls, domestic, slurs, drugs, one attempted death. Nothing major, significant, or out of the ordinary. Some, it's kind of a similar number we've been seeing over recent months of psychiatric calls, attempted suicides and whatnot. But other than nothing outstanding or major that you wanted to report.
Overdoses?
Yes. So, that's it for police. I don't have anything for the consortium, because we're meeting at, you know.
So, any questions? Okay, if not, I'll move to, I don't need, just acknowledging correspondence that the full board received this month, and Janice already covered sidewalk issues on, on South Street. So, that'll bring us to new business. We have a contract to do the even on the fiscal analysis impact for the forty-sixth South Street project. It's been reviewed by our attorney and counsel with the planning board, as well as Matt, the zoning officer. But we're only once we're authorized to sign the contract. So, they recommended that we, the planning boards recommended that we do this. And so, I would entertain a motion before we discuss it to have the agreement. Any more? All right.
Intended. No, I think it's, I thought it's, it's actually.
I don't know. That's just.
I thought it was.
Yeah, twelve.
So, would someone like to make a motion for this agreement for doing the fiscal impact analysis on the forty-sixth South Street project? From Good Morning Associates.
Yeah, move this.
Second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those standing passes?
What's the background that they, did they talk about that?
Sixty-eight.
Okay, good. So, the, we received correspondence related to the, to the Garden Club work on signage at the Water Tower. So, Janice, if you'd like to.
Okay, do you want to stand up?
If you'd like. Well, let's, toward you. You want to sit there, fine.
Yeah, I'm a teacher, but can I say?
Stand up.
Oh, yeah.
Stand up, we're forty in the right.
Just to give you a little bit of background, in nineteen sixty-four, the new Route ninety-six remained, and that made the hill that's between Old Main and ninety-six. And so, there were a group of people who wanted to put trees in there and grass, and make it a little more, you know, presentable. They planted tennants, rose trees, flowering crops, cherry trees, and shrubs, and this was all done by Rotary Club, the Boy Scouts, Chamber of Commerce, and the Goers officials. And that also included plant boxes with flowering grass and platoons, and each one located in the business section of Main Street. In nineteen sixty-six, Louise DeLong, who has long passed away, her name was Lounsbury, I remember that name, I remember her. She decided that she wanted to start the Garden Club officially, and so she invited people, and they elected officers. And so, the first thing they did was to work on the hillside project, to trim the trees. And also, they had an area in front of the mall, a gas station, which is now Ramdow, because we had a mystery mall, there was a gas station there at that time. And they also provided, like, the library with dry floral arrangements throughout the year, through the year. So, now, fast forward to here, we have thirty-two members, twenty-eight of them women, and are probably average ages seventy-five. We do have four men also, average age seventy-five. And part of the reason that that happens is because we have a program every month, and it's held during the day, so if you are working, you can help. So, lots of times people join when they retire. So, actually, we have one on March fifteenth that is called Good Growing Big Aero Farms, presented by, it's an aerobatic system, and it'll be held at the library at twelve-thirty, it's open to the public.
So, aerobatics?
Aerobatics.
Hmm, yes.
Do you want to know a little more about that? Growing vegetables indoors in a sustainable way without pesticides, et cetera. One of the programs that we had last year was the CSI program, and the Garden Club helps to support that. So, we have only one fundraiser a year, and I'm sure you've seen it on Main Street, held with Preparatarium Church. We dig from our gardens, and also, you know, have some annuals that we purchase from Eddie Dale, actually. So, that's our only fundraiser, and then basically, we spend the rest of the year giving the money away to various endeavors, including buying books on garden for the library. We support the children's garden in Etacoma, the food bank, the Christmas Bureau, CSI, et cetera. It also depends on what's brought to us as to, to be considered. We like to try to have it related to gardening, and whether it's flower gardening or vegetable gardening, or topics that might relate to conservation. So, for your information, as I may not know, we take care of gardens at each of the three entrance signs to Village. One is at the Water Tower. One is kind of next to the Haircutters, you come into town on ninety-six. One is at the Sure Save Post Office, the bus stop in Jacksonville. And there is a smallish garden at Jennifer Manor that assists the manager's there. So, I got started coming to these meetings because the sign at the Sure Save fell on our garden, and if we, after a very long investigation, no one knows who owns those signs, who put them up, and who or maintains them. So, the Village DPDW fortunately put the sign back up on the Sure Save, even though that's on private property, just like the one in the mall. So, the only garden that is on Village property is the Water Tower one. And previously, we had hired KJ Landscaping to redo the, to do the garden that's at the north end, and we wanted to do something similar on the south end. A long time ago, they planted some viburns around the sign, and they were totally a mess. And we tried to trim them, and then, again, being on Village property, I thought I should ask, and everybody's just doing what they want with them. So, I did contact Dave Allen three times, and he said that he would take them down, but he never did, and then, I'm not reporting who took them down and hauled it away, but it was Garden Club member. So, now we have these stumps there, and the entire garden itself is misshapen because of the shade that was produced by the oestrus. So, what we would like to do is have the stumps ground out. We want to put steel landscaping edging, and I, I don't know how that would affect the mold there. If you have.
We should trim around everything.
Okay, so, that answers that. And then they would clean up, well, first thing they have to do is I, and I'm going to be the one to do it, lift out everything that's there, so that we can save that and replant it after it has been done. So, it would be according to the, you know, the description here, clean up the bed, install a layer of compost, soil, and then new edging, reshape the bed for a more uniform and symmetrical shape and size. And then we'll replant mulch, just like we always do, and we'll take care of that and water it, because if we have a dry season, we have to haul the water to these places. And that particular garden being in the full summer takes a lot of water. It's amazing how much water we, and we are on a cycle, not one person is in charge of that, but various people are. So, that was going to be a total of six hundred and thirty-four dollars and ninety-nine cents. And I'm not asking the village to pay for this, we have the money, and that's one of our ways of spending the money we, we earn from our plants, so, but I just.
So, I asked, yeah, just ask Janice, this is our own property.
Yes.
As we deal with any of our other projects that's to come forward. Plus, they don't win on the board.
It was nineteen eighty-seven, when the sign went in at the Water Tower, I think.
Okay.
Because I remember when it was up there.
I guess I didn't ask you.
Dan Virgin, I think Dan Virgin had hand painted it, but I don't know if carved.
Well, it's carved.
It's carved.
And?
And I remember him painting the lettering.
But who he was, who paid for that? Nobody seems to know, Janice, and then volunteers go up into the historians' box and stuff.
I love that.
He did tell already about the historical.
Yes. It'd be, it was long. Well, down the road, you know, they had all those circles for all the churches. So, then some people said churches, and then they said, oh, no, it couldn't have been the churches that paid for it, because it's, you know, government thing. And then it was the Chamber of Commerce, and then it was the Rotary Club. And I followed all those leads, and everybody said, I don't know.
Everybody else.
Yeah, good point. The only thing I was told, that was, I was too much to talk to Liz, Tom Segunda, and she said, or somebody in the office said, oh, Dave Reynolds takes care of it, and he's the one who takes care of it, and he's part of the Garden Club. And I said, well, that I can definitely tell you is not true.
It's a great mystery, I think, that you.
Yes, it is, and I've given enough, I really don't care. I just want to be fair, and all, but I was contacted, and probably the next thing on the list was by Don Slatter, who said he wants to attach something to those signs for the farmer's yard. That's it. Not my job, basically.
And that's actually, I talked to Lins for her about that, and she doesn't know where Don got that idea, because that's now the way they're going. So, they're going a different way.
All right. Because it really would have been with the sign, or where they would attach it. And it sort of thawed out, and, you know, and a year ago, they talked about, Vicky Romanoff had a plan to replace all of those signs to the ten thousand dollars, but no money for that. So, they were mistaken what we've got.
I don't think Tom Lang was involved.
Well, I asked Carolyn, and she couldn't really remember. She's also a member of the Garden Club.
Right, that's good.
So, we can just proceed, you know, on this list as soon as possible, because things are coming up.
You don't want any of that part of that bill to go to the beautification grant. Maybe if we plant new plantings, is that the criteria? No. Oh, but it's whatever beautifies the village. Chris is really good about that, I mean.
Okay, so I could submit that, and we could possibly, but I want to ask the village for anything.
No, I think, you know, this is, it's almost in and out. As long as you guys are doing the volunteer work that takes, and if the DPDW does any part, it's all volunteer, we just have to match it fifty, fifty, fifty.
So, we don't think we need the DPDW to do anything.
Okay.
You know, but.
You're going to drive hard?
No, KJ, KJ Landscapes. They did, they did the one in the north garden, came out very nicely, and so we, a lot of just, you know, stick with it. And I met with him, him wearing shorts, and I had on, you know, gloves and, and a snowstorm. So, we would like him to do it, and, but we want to get on his list soon before the season passes and we're lifting out forageable plants and shocking him. So, that's our good story.
Thanks.
So, any other on the farmer's market?
The farmer, I know the farmer market is, Elaine is writing a grant for the tourism that I think is due on the nineteenth, to do these signs that they're talking about. And then they talked about doing them next in a different year.
That's for the farmer's market?
That's for the farmer's market, what they wanted to do. But they're planning on doing some plantings on the hill at the farmer's market that we can also do through our beautification grant, like a tart press.
All right, any other news business thing we had? Okay, old business, we had two items. The first is the last board meeting we had, we had a discussion on the possibility of moratorium. At the end of that discussion, the Village Board thought it was wise to talk to the attorney for the village about moratorium and answering our questions. We had a private session with Guy Crowe, the attorney for the village. And so, we're back to the point now of getting kind of information from Steve. And he gave us a very good tutorial of the reasons for moratorium. I wouldn't say official criteria, criteria we should use. And a big one was that, do we have the mechanisms in place to review a project, like, any science project, small or whatever? And so, subdivision and site plan review, do have those in place that can review projects that may be out there. So, I just leave it a little bit to Village Board members that want to comment, and if someone has anything to make any, on your thoughts.
Well, I was unfortunately out of town for your.
Yeah, you missed, we heard you were having fun.
For the tutorial. But, but I, I remember where I was some weeks ago, and I'm not convinced that the moratorium is the right tool. I do believe that it was specifically targeting an attempted stop in a particular project, which I think is one of the inappropriate uses of the moratorium. I do think that there are deficiencies in the zoning that need to be addressed, but I don't believe that the moratorium is needed to address those. So, besides the fact that I missed that, missed that class.
Three hours.
Yeah, it was, it was an effective use of our time, and it confirmed to me also that the moratorium is not the way to go. But I didn't come out with any, if, if anything, it confirmed that, with me, the attorney. The only question I had is, do we take the vote now, or do we take it after the election? That's the only question I have. That's the only question I have.
My better question is, is anyone looking to move it? So, for me, I was actually looking for reasons to support it, and I got, I didn't get any of them. Even the limited version that already has initially supported, I don't, I don't think, at best, we're on the shake of ground legally. At best, even best case scenario, I don't think we get any productive results out of the moratorium, even if we were, you know, that we couldn't get otherwise. So, I think, yeah, I think we need to debate, have to vote in council unless you have a compelling reason not to.
So, Rachel, any comments?
No, I, I, thank you.
And, you know, one of the reasons that I suggested is it pushes the envelope to get some action done. So, I always suggest that we're not getting it forward, and hopefully, the next board will pick that up and make a high priority to do that.
I'm wanting the village to move that we not, that we not take any action on the moratorium at this point in time.
Okay, we have a motion.
I will, we suggested, I don't know whether we have a motion or not, so...
Well, I think that it's a clear direction. I think that people are waiting for an answer, and that's my answer.
So, your answer was not moving forward to the moratorium?
Not, yes.
Well, it could be a motion to table the discussion on it, so maybe that's the best...
Maybe that's the amendment I'll take. That we are going to table a discussion on the moratorium.
Till later date. So, is there a second date for that motion?
I'll second it, until when?
Right, just says later date, doesn't say when.
Because there's only two guarantees that are going to be here.
Right, right, I'm sorry about that.
It's a later date, I will so far to say after the election.
I found it interesting, one of the things that I was checking, I've been turning over my line, is the notion that a moratorium, the tool, a moratorium serves, the purpose of the tool is to prohibit something for a specific purpose. And I, I think from that perspective, I just can't, I can't figure out what it is that would be attempting to prohibit.
Can they?
Sorry, sorry. I think that I sometimes can't speak loud when I'm thinking and I talk. The purpose of the moratorium is to prohibit something. And I'm not comfortable with that notion, that we are in that position, as a village right now. That's all I have to say, please.
So, we have a motion and a friendly amendment to consider...
Just to table it, we have to have a second date.
So, I'm just waiting on, on...
Any other discussion? Okay, in the favor, say hi.
Hi.
Oh, you understand? Future date. So, the second old business is non-own one response agreement. And, okay, what does that entail?
It was in there a couple of months ago, I guess.
Old business.
Village Bethlehem gets a table, and we talked about recently, the 21st, and we tabled.
I knew it would be in there February 1st, November 1st.
Did we announce the basis?
Well, he asked me today if you guys had signed it, and I said, "No, they handled it."
Intermissible emergency response, that was like committee agreement. And...
How did we table it?
We tabled it because it came in like the day before our last meeting.
Oh, that, just not our last meeting, though.
Not in February.
For when I wasn't at, that's why I was like, "What is this?"
Is it in the February?
Well, it's actually there right now.
Yes, you don't need to, they can have some cake, you gotta have cake. We had dusted, we don't have to worry about extra rain, any. Between heart and the bathroom, so you need to...
Can't have a stand chance.
No, both they call, both. I'm pretty sure she put her fingers in it, I wasn't looking at her either. Are we looking for something?
This is actually the first time I've seen this.
So, you want to see it in April?
I think we said to Guy, if I'm not mistaken, but I'm trying to remember who responded.
I did that, Jason, but I did not, because this came from... It was just an agreement, there's talks about cost sharing, and mentioning dollars.
Well, it's actually, it's in, it's in tonight's, yeah, it's there.
So, it's a five-year...
So, would you like to have this table for that?
Yeah, I don't see any reason not to agree to it.
Is something just for village, or?
Well, it's released, it's...
It's an opposed oversight committee, jurisdiction, or this review, not jurisdiction, it's tasked with reviewing Towns County Emergency Response. The last, the last part, the last part. There's a role of the Emergency Response Oversight Committee, which is going to approve by the Towns County Legislature.
Is this one of those, those things that is supposed to be working together?
Yeah, it is, but it's also mentioned... It's also mentioned review dispatch protocols and procedures, jurisdictional protocols, how minor responses are dispatched, review oversight of the Towns County Communications Center dispatch procedures, request for discharges, closest car concept, all of those things. So, I think it's mentioned the, how are things working, and it's mentioned...
So, village first departments, village fire departments.
So, they were going...
It strikes me, it strikes me as a TCOG for emergency department heads from around the county. But it does require for spending agencies to provide yearly summaries, feedback, tracking, recommendations, term responses. I don't think they can get that from the emergency, anyway, have it.
So, what strikes me here is that they could set up or implement a process that we may or may not agree with, and we still have to follow it.
So, at least you have input in your project.
Right, but otherwise, I don't see...
Yeah, I guess I would want, I guess I would want Jason and Chief's opinion on it. And it might be worth, for that reason, but it might be worth a conversation, we should look at it.
And if, if in fact, we're part of it, isn't it equitable distribution of decision making, because this is high level city?
Okay.
Don't worry, they'll be plenty for units always.
Wait, it does, doesn't it? Community based ambulance service, what do you have?
Oh, I'm just looking at the list of members, or members wearing...
Says community, uh, adult ambulance provider.
It also says community based.
Done?
Under the governance page on page three, and then on page four. This is in the 17 voting members. So, I don't know, I mean, it looks like, for example, volunteer firefighter representatives two. Does that mean two countywide, or two...
Probably.
I think the, the, the 17, I'm guessing it's two countywide as opposed to two...
Or...
Yeah, I miss a partner. You see where it is now?
Okay, so I have questions.
I have questions, table, it's all nice.
Okay, any other old business?
I like to suggest that we go to kick between this and the budget work.
Let's take a small recess, a small recess right there. Be secondhand motion for that. So, back to budget.
Who has...
Where are we starting? It's bad, please make a general.
General, the only thing we changed from last meeting, I believe, was Vicki confirmed some of the amounts.
Mm-hmm, we changed three numbers.
And it was the MST retirement.
Yep. Team 7, 43131.
Police contract, over here, this is always starting to go ahead. What's the police number track? So, that's...
34244. And we're, we're looking at the updated, right? We're looking at the updated one, so...
That's police contract, and that's one.
It's not, 910.82? Oh, maybe it's 98.8?
9810?
910, yeah.
No, just two of them.
4315. 43131.
And the other one was health insurance for just like the village, because I had it at 86, and I think it's at 68 now, right?
The hospital, the medical?
Yeah.
96.8?
Yep.
68302.
I had added in the other person, I think, twice. And Jordan, and you had discussed adding that in the $10,000 for sidewalk services. So, those are the changes.
A234A, who's backed to $10,000 for sidewalk. Should be 2721996.
Nothing, I want to make sure, I use a different person, because Rachel saved hers to the Dropbox list, and then...
Oh, sorry.
No, 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 that's fine, that's why I used my original one. I'm going to make sure I'm using that one. We did too far in.
$1,000 worth is coming from, yeah.
No, just to get one more, but it's, it's fine, I don't need much, I'm just going to book it mine. And just, it's fine. Well, yeah, no, it's just for that, just for that reason, that if I just use the different... It says the same, because I do it, but this is a different version. So, there's, oh, you're talking about, you didn't say, but it doesn't tell you what, tell you what, like filed on Friday.
Do I?
Oh.
Does that move for long to her now, to make it effective enough?
Well, we, personally, we have to write it off.
Right.
So, you got to introduce it.
And she hasn't written, so we ought to be... I didn't know you were going to have it, so...
A book, a book, a book.
We get it in April, we make them effective, we make them three parts, which would be...
That's okay. I can take her for this one. I can take the second one for the year. I knew I needed a lot, sorry, I just forgot, I didn't know, but I had it.
What's your bottom line number?
I'm getting my whole lot of letters.
For each of the quarters, so they double the first quarter, because right now, it only shows three quarters, and you need to have two or three.
We have to go over it. It's all, so, I guess we create it from the... It was what you had before.
271996.
Yep. Yep, 2721996. And that was, I think, it was a Dropbox, but this year.
And that was, I think, well, it says Dropbox, but this year.
I'm changing the rates. I'll have to do that because I'm very.
I don't want to run out of room, that's why I'm trying to figure out more detail than I can agree with, but I'm just.
It's too much. Yeah, I need to, yeah, so can we, after this quarter?
Figure out, you want to give that part.
This is, then your next one.
Right, so we do.
And the next one would be thirty-five, and then we'd do the next two at the other rate. Okay. Right, and then it goes back.
All right, ready?
Sorry. Am I ready for that?
So if we use, if we use eighty of fund, if we use eighty of fund balance, we will probably have about a nine-six-nine-five-four-three.
Nine-six.
Nine, nine-six-nine, five-four-three. Which is a rate. We're just going to, just down this.
Yep, loans for a dollar more. But go ahead, I'm.
Yes, you have, you have cents, you have pennies.
Oh, probably, right, okay.
Decimals in your.
Okay, I'll get rid of them, okay.
Gives us a rate of seven-thirty-seven.
From?
Six-ninety. There is a little more fund balance that can be used. Or what if you do the hundred thousand or two? Too much more. Seven-twenty-two. Lower our fund balance to about fourteen percent. Which is not bad.
Well, I have.
So what did April say?
You say seven-twenty-two?
You can have seven-twenty-two.
If we use a hundred thousand, then we need to fourteen percent?
Please, this is about fourteen percent, very, very important, you're half, the cycle of about your half behind you. Wait, fourteen percent fund, or fourteen, the fund up is fourteen percent, would be fourteen percent if we use a hundred thousand.
You said more probably, you said.
I shouldn't say your halves.
I just.
Yeah. Well, the audit is as of year end, May thirty-one, twenty-seventeen, which gives us our funding current balance that we're getting into. We don't know when this year ends, May, we don't know what our fund balance is on audit basis.
Thank you. But it's not like basically.
Shouldn't be, because we're, we're, which I'm keeping it light. Don't you be close, I mean. But we are making the assumption, yeah. What does it take to get us to seven-ten? But it would be about thirteen percent.
If we're at seven-ten, I think the same as last year, we were at seven-one, but it did actually drop because assessments went up so high.
That was. Went up, it affected us six times. Well, that's because of the, the total, the total assessment number we were using this time last year changed to their final number.
Right, right.
Their final number was four million higher, I know we're using. Uh, seven-ten would be a hundred and sixteen thousand.
What's the percentage of fund scale?
It's fourteen point six before that.
Oh, okay.
And I would like, well, what do we need, maybe five days notice of opening hearing, business or calendar?
Business, but you know what? Budget is at five, I need to, I need to double it, I can do that while you're doing it.
Because my thought is that I like to wait until the last minute, wait until the last day of notice, the budget, the budget public hearings, to give assessment time to see if the numbers.
Changed at all.
Which it might not until May anyway, but. I'm starting to see on the assessment website on properties, I'm starting to see the red preliminary assessment designated. So I don't know if we're, when they're finding it, it's coming up.
How significant was the change last year?
Was a lot. Four million.
So, so what was the difference in?
About twenty percent. It's great.
We thought it would be seven-eleven, it was six-eighty-five.
Shoot for seven, a little bit again, and see if we can do that. Although that's a good way.
Right.
Um, not for nothing, but the only problem with that is that you know eventually we're going to have to go with a seven-eleven. If you go from seven-eleven to seven-thirty-seven, people scream, if you go from seven-twenty-two to seven-thirty-seven, they'll scream as loud.
Yeah, that's true, I mean, I wouldn't suggest it except that our, our fund balance at this point, I think we're being fairly conservative in what we do, even to go to a three percent. I mean, we're still exceeding our expectations, but. It's a year, we're going to be waiting for a year when we've got.
When we're ready, spirit.
When we got a second ambulance, a second full-time crew, and fire department renovation that happened all along the same year, maybe we, uh, right? But, but we're starting to get into that area where it's, you know, this sort of consortium area where it's like. Because it's, I really, I need, all right, that's the exact, but, you know, four hundred thousand. I do. Well, people want to put in, that's the. I mean, we also have, you know, can we imagine that the planning and zoning numbers will stay that high for, forever?
For a couple of years.
For a couple of years, but, I mean, probably, maybe, maybe, I guess.
Well, even if they, I mean, if they, I mean, if they actually build, we get any tax revenue out of it, we should see our checkers.
But I mean, like, it's, it's a long, if we're looking at that, you build cycles, that's.
Yeah.
That won't do that. There's a big difference.
Coming in here.
I guess what I'm saying is that some of these costs aren't at, and, I mean, or continue, we'll be able to check these next year. Maybe.
I think, I would like to keep it at the lower end because people are kind of freak when they say they want it all.
Now, that being said, and I know, just to create that being said, when we're talking about the difference between like a seven-ten number and a seven in the quarter, fifteen cents on a two-hundred thousand dollar house is thirty bucks.
Yeah.
Thirty dollars is thirty bucks.
Have, I think, by, yeah, and having just readjusted my monthly payment again for property taxes, and, and doing it every year for thirty or forty dollars, it, out of fixed income, which I don't have currently, but will, it's a lot of money.
Right. I certainly, I mean, as a year, I've been here, it's gone up, but they're good for me.
My taxes are far more than my principal.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, far, of course, I've lived here forever, but.
You're not new to it.
But I'm not, but I.
You're new, you're so new.
It would make you feel any better to tell me all the money, my taxes are bigger than my property payment. Yeah, that's a little like that for a long time.
Want to come to the other side of the lake, I'll make you cry.
About the ninety-seven cents that you pay, a bear's a little six, seven, eight dollars.
None of the town of Lansing, trust me, I pay just fine. I'm getting to that payment, just taking, wasting time.
Very usable.
You know, you can just feel like, ugh. You can figure it out, and you'll, and you'll get three, it doesn't, I wish that that were true.
Yeah, so I have a very strong.
Okay.
Sense. Of which, yeah.
For some reason, I think it's ten.
I think, but Debbie's point is well taken, I mean, non-tax bodily increase, the costs are pretty, pretty tangible, so maybe trying to offset this.
I mean, that, what payroll do we have to pay anyway, I mean, that. It's.
I mean, I, I think a hundred and sixteen to keep us at a three percent increase is totally reasonable, and, and I think.
I have the answer, it is, but it is, but it has to be, we have to hold our public hearing for fifteen days.
Right, so, right. Meeting's the ninth. Day of the, second day's the ninth. And is that business or calendar?
Business, always business, I always do business, because it gives me a little bit, but if that's the case, um, then I can. Which means, and the journal has screwed up the deadline, so it would have to be, you know, Thursday, Wednesday, right? Tuesday. So we would have to have it in my next.
At least five days shall be elapsed. At least five days shall be elapsed between the date of the first publication here. It doesn't specify? Business or not.
Let's just write. Right, which is why I always default to business, I'm looking around on the first.
First Tuesday, Sunday, so we have the moment on the Friday.
On the second, which, I mean.
So we're looking at one.
On the twenty-fourth, I'm back on the second. You're going to be fine, all of you.
Hey, I'm here.
So, twenty-fourth. I'll just tell you, I finally sent to somebody today.
Twenty-fourth, right? But if she prepares it and gives it to me, I can send it.
We can send it at a time, it's such a hard two.
Oh, okay, okay.
Well, okay.
But I came to a realization today, this is my circus and you are my monkeys.
Well, it's seven ahead of time, scheduled for Thursday, the twenty-ninth, that will be the Friday, it's here, so. The journal.
So for now, do you want me to do a hundred and sixteen and whatever the difference is, and then you'll, you'll tell me what to do after that?
And just prepare the notice.
Right.
Send it to the journal.
Right.
Send it to the twenty-ninth.
Right, and on the twenty-ninth, we have to have A R copy that we can hand out because they will be going like.
They're going to be printing all day.
All day, every day.
Because they'll be online, down Main Street.
No, what I'm saying is by, what day is it, the twenty-ninth? So by the twenty-eighth, you're going to check assessments and say, okay, we're going to go with.
I mean, email, well, I'll, yeah, I'll email to you on the twenty-seventh, okay? Changes, yes, I'll maybe, I'll email, there is a.
Okay, and then you'll just let me know what number.
You'll probably say, wait, what do you want, like everyone else? Which is fine, but. Worth a shot.
It was a nice surprise, although Poby writing in has.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, my God. Yes. That was the worst day.
It was a very bad feeling, your math doesn't work.
So you wait until three, call me about it, I'm going to fix that for you.
Me, even for summer, it told me. You know I didn't wait long.
Okay, so that's general, that's general.
You have no water?
Sure.
Okay.
No, I'm sorry, general, we decided seven-ten is the magic number.
All right, but it was quick, quick, quick.
Well, you want to.
And that's a three percent increase, correct?
That is a witch, on the rate for eleven.
Eleven.
No, no, no.
You were right.
No, right, no, seven-ten is the rate.
Right.
That's a two-point-nine percent increase.
Oh, okay, I tried to just keep track of that stuff for future reference, can I just, let me just see if this fails or. Oh, I know why. Okay, I'm good.
Sure.
Yep. Okay. So, I just want to walk through this, before I took your advice, the part.
Of the rates.
Of the rates. I guess that was a big heart, anyway.
Yeah, you get to make me crazy in the middle.
Absolutely. So, so, so what we figured out is that we are going to, first of all, this quarter is going to go up two dollars in base for inside, and two dollars per gallon, and for a thousand gallons, so, which.
Eighty of users.
Greater than, well, it's not a gap.
Yeah. Per thousand gallons for this quarter only.
You're talking about the quarter starting in May.
I'm talking about the billing happening now, or does that billing happen?
Goes through May first, because May first is.
Because we're in, we're in the February, March, April quarter, which is already being calculated on our current rate. So if we want to.
No, we already noticed, and we didn't need to notice these changes, they were supposed to happen and were voted on two quarters.
Right, and we had that software issue, which, by the way, for those of you who haven't heard, um, what happened is we had an update done, and when we did the update, they didn't remove our old instance of the software. So I was pointing at one, and Tony and Vicki were pointing at the other, which, which is what screwed up our dates, it screwed up our rates, it changed all the information. So that's what happened, so that's all been put back in proper order.
Our current, current quarter.
Yeah, so February will go up by two bucks.
So what's the base going to be?
Fifty-one, thirty-five.
And six.
Seven, seven, twenty-five.
Eight-one.
Seven-three.
Seven-twenty-five would be.
No, six, yeah, five, twenty-five, you're right.
But it's only that quarter, and this is, the, the good thing about that is this is the lightest quarter for water for all users.
Okay, so that the May quarter is going to what?
The May quarter will go to, the, we will go to, um, the May quarter will go to fifty-five, and, and, and drop the per gallon rate to five-seventy-five.
Okay.
August quarter, it'll go up to fifty-eight, fifty, and a base, and the gallon rate will go to six dollars.
Okay.
June, July, that's not going to be August, that's going to be, um, this is the one thing, I wanted to do the May quarter rates for two quarters. Okay, then the following quarter, so the third quarter of this fiscal year.
August.
It's not, it's not August, it'll be November, right? November will be fifty-eight, fifty, and five, and six.
That's what we just said for August, though.
Yeah, that's not, for August, it's going to be the same as it was in May. So we're going to have two of the lowest mounts for the year, because we have, we have four quarters, right?
So the one we're in, you're taking a five, two-one, thirty-five, and seven-one, four.
Yes, that's for this fiscal year, that's not for the, anything for next year.
Yep.
Okay? So the fifty, the fifty-five, the five-seventy-five is going to run for six months, so it'll run from May through November. Is that six months?
Fifty-five and six.
And fifty-five and five-seventy-five runs from May through November.
For usage for May, not billing for May, right?
We should all be talking usage.
Yes, we're all talking usage.
Gets billed whenever it gets billed, so the current quarter usage, February, March, April quarter that we're currently in, the usage is going to be fifty-one, thirty-five, and seven-twenty-five.
Yeah, I agree.
And the May usage quarter starts at fifty-five, five-seventy-five.
Yes, now, she just told me.
Yeah, no, that is what I said, fifty-five. Yeah, no, that is what I said, 55, 5.75.
So May through October.
But May, the May is July.
You're good.
Usage.
And the August, September, October, stay that way, is that what you're saying? And then November, starting in the November quarter, you wanna go up to what?
58.56 and 58.50 and then $6.
Okay. And then you're looking at another bump next February quarter.
Wait a minute, yes. February quarter will be 52.50 and 6.25. And that's the year. Now, based on that, what I did was I added all of these together to figure out how much money that gives me. Yes, okay. So, so that, that totals net revenues for two fiscal periods of $668,570. Eight cents.
668.53. Give or take.
So I haven't had a chance to talk to you about this.
We're gonna talk about outside rates?
Completely muddy this up.
Can we, can we at least confirm this approach, then we can go back and talk about whether we take it out of outside?
No, actually, now that we've talked about outside rates, I'm just wondering if there's a way to smooth this a little bit, so the water rates are.
Nobody's gonna notice it, because I, I, I mean, everybody's gonna notice it, because, well, no. But nobody's not gonna notice the bumps in the, those things because of the way the water usage goes. I mean, by the time we get to November, they're, they're using less water, so you're gonna, you're, you're going up, but you're not, it's not.
So your net bill is going to be less.
Yeah. It doesn't change that much.
The.
I just gotta say the order. Whether or not it works out, with a brilliant calculation. There you go.
So. Yes and no, because the bills that go out in November, so the usage for May, June, part of June, half of July, half of August, historically, the November billing is our highest. They're absolutely gonna notice, trust me when I tell you.
When you say November billing, those are the bills that go out in November.
For the usage for May, June, July.
For the August, September, October quarter.
Yeah, bills that go out in November are August, September, October, that.
They're part of July, all of August, all of September, and part of October. It's our highest billing, always.
Lawns.
Lawns, pools, showers.
Planters.
Kids' home. Yeah.
High school. Yeah, it makes such a difference. Just have something in your house for all.
But that, then, that speaks to what I was saying, is that's our lowest usage number, to be the May, June, July, August, September, October quarters.
That's the lowest cost per gallon.
Yeah, but you don't, you're not getting a bill until November.
That's fine, but. We're charging less.
Put it out as yours.
So you wanna muddy the water by changing, finding a median rate and, and leaving it there? Which I had at one point and decided that that was too much.
Long term, yes. And so what I'm looking around with is. It's a median rate that's gonna generate a surplus.
And this generates a surplus with that touch.
It's a median rate that, instead of coming out of a whole new way of calculating outside rates, we find the median rate, stick with the rate and a half calculation for outside, but then as we run under the comfort balance in the water fund, use a portion of that against the budget and only reduce inside rates.
Ah, I love it.
Pretty good. But the median rate has to be high enough to run that surplus.
How do you see this as a surplus? Because you still aren't, I don't have a balance.
You wanna hear?
I don't have, oh, okay. Because I still have it shortly.
I had her next February rate.
Yeah.
At the 62.56.25 rate. She's running about, what's the bottom line? 116, something, 68.
It's 687.59.
So she's running 25, that's not huge, but it's.
So here's what I did, Vicky, you're, you're absolutely right. I said it's $5,129 off. I still changed the record rate to increase that by $5,000 because the gallons are, the gallon usage goes up and down and all around. We can make $5,000 isn't that much.
You don't wanna use the debt reserve now?
No, no, I don't, if I need to, I will use it for budgeting purposes. I don't think $5,000 is consequential. Okay. Do you agree or disagree?
It's only, it's debt service, only use of debt service.
Yeah, yeah. I agree. So what I mean, we could do that, I mean, I had some of that the last time. When I did it before you started in on this, I was using $100,000, $109,000 to bring it down. We still have to grow.
Have to grow. From now on, we bring it down, not bring it down across the board, we keep the outside fixed.
Yeah, I like that. And so, so if we do it this way, that $109,000 will bring it down out of inside rate next year.
Right.
I like it. But to leave it where we have it for this.
Right.
So you wanna raise meter sales by the 51.29?
Yes, so, so the number I have in that number, so the $173,699.
Oh, okay, that's an array of four.
Yeah, and, okay, okay, well, that's what it takes to balance it.
Yep, yep.
And then, I mean, if in fact, if in fact, we get to a point and, and nobody's using any water and we're not billing anything, I mean, one of the things that we absolutely took down was the receiving also, I think, that we had something in here because we've got people to pay the bills, and we, yeah.
You put the wrong data on, you'd be surprised when you just. When people thought there were six months bound.
To do that once a year, just serious.
Yeah. Just shuffling, doing the office, it was crazy. I tried to.
Okay. So are we done with this water then? So you still wanna look at how we, we mediate that or how I can get it to come closer?
What if we do, on the rate we're currently in, this quarter's already been published, right? Or I, did we approve it previously?
Yes.
It's the quarter we're in.
Yes, yes, we, yes.
All right.
We can't, we don't wanna change that because that's the one that's bumped so high.
And that was which, what was number again?
51.35, 7.25.
And that's the step into the next fiscal year. That's the other thing you don't wanna touch. You wanna at least get it up there so that when you step into the next year and things go up again, that they're at least closer to going, closer to the one. And even with the $2, even going from $51 to $55 on the.
Base.
On the base is gonna, what really hurts people is our gallons. So we're going down in the gallons the first quarter.
And you wanna go down to six?
Not that, the first quarter, I thought it was, I thought it's 5.5.
So I'm putting the May quarter, you're going 55. Give me those again.
51.35, 7.25.
That's the one we're in.
55, 7.25. 58, 6, 62.50, 6.25.
Can we go in May quarter, can we go to 55 and 6?
Sure.
And what do you bring, just make it more?
Just a little bit, 55 and 6.
Okay, what do you wanna know about that number?
Okay.
55, so now, I don't know. 55, 6, I'm now at 6.76.
And I wouldn't, I wouldn't even worry about what that does to your revenue, your revenue for this budget. It's gonna do whatever it needs to be to balance, it's that's like.
Right.
Could we build 55 and 6 and then leave that for six months? And then in the November quarter start, 58, 75 and 6, bump the base slightly. And it's an even step from 55 to 62.50 to 7.15. So we're 58, 75 in the November quarter base. And then 62.50 next February, then we'll leave that as our calculation.
Are you leaving the, as far as gallons in the, after six months?
After six months, I'm leaving it at 6.
Okay.
It, what, where did the base go to, or?
58.75.
58.75, okay, and then we go to, and we go leave the 62.50.
62.50 and 6 in quarter.
Yeah.
And leave that as our final calculation from which to get outside forever. Let's see if the base has changed. And then from there, if we have, everyone who's outside now is gonna keep getting this, can we keep paying that?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And then now we can start to talk about quantity breaks, municipal rates for other new users that haven't, that aren't connected yet.
Okay.
And if all of their revenue comes back to take down, we'll be in separate.
Got it. That's a really, that's a really hefty number. I mean, I, yeah, my budget is great. I'm gonna have some money in my, uh, fund.
So the two thoughts is.
Because the rate table says.
Even if we, even if we have to, so remember how we looked at a long time ago, how we were, the outside rate wasn't covering up pumping costs?
Right.
That goes away with this next February rate.
That's what our pumping cost is?
A little bit higher than our pumping cost. We're actually making a little money on outside rates, so we'll charge it by inside. Then any new users outside, any municipal users, even if we have to go below pumping cost for a large user per gallon, if the revenue is big enough and it's coming back inside, then as we run surplus, we need to put money aside for the stuff that wasn't put aside over the last forty years.
Yeah, I've been doing, yeah, absolutely.
And control in separate.
Got it. Yeah.
That's handy.
Okay, so you got your number, Vicky, 6.72.
I got it.
6.99.
And the budget is?
Every, every water period, we need to go over this before the.
Over what?
You know, I know, I could.
I got, I got my sewer.
And the, well, it's not sewer. We have a number for sewer. Yeah, it's a buck and a buck and a half, I think. No, but we have, we have the revenue number, yeah.
Right, and I'm going to come to Lakeville meeting with a draft of the new sewer law, local law, which comes to 2008 to for sewer.
Yep. Her number.
We need, we have to do sewer rates increased by, by local law. So I will have a draft for you in April, and hopefully you can, you can schedule that for May.
That's, you know, that's another one we, I was in the how I would expand sewer. I mean, we know we're talking to Frank Palmer, who's going to be doing disposal in our sewer plant. So that'll be extra revenue without anything, but we do have to, Guy actually had that, or David. One of them was supposed to be drawing on some kind of contractual, because we've never done that.
Yeah, we haven't done that, yeah.
And one of the pieces of that was that, to make sure that they, they're not dumping anything for fracking in our sewer. And they have to be completely residential. I mean, there's gotta be some, something in that contract that makes that. There's gotta be a way to test it and there's a different leader that goes along with it, that I'm aware of. The MREs told me about.
So then I've gone to David and then David retired? Couldn't that be just sort of?
And you're loaded, because we have.
Yeah, that's what I'm afraid of. So we need to, we need to revive that, because Frank's gonna come back and one, Frank Palmer is, is gonna want.
Well, then, I mean, and there are sections of the village without sewage, I mean, that's the other.
I think, I don't know, if anybody ever develops mill spots, I think we should require that they go on sewer. I mean, period.
Well, especially, well, when it sits in the, you know, the stream overlay, it definitely should, and it should trigger that.
Because as far as I know, that's the only one on that side that doesn't have sewer.
Mine has the little sewer.
You have sewer?
Responsible.
Which we have.
I know, then, I didn't think it was on Ice Street. I mean, I didn't know.
Pretty much Congress.
Congress.
Congress became, all came to, to U Street, that whole section's without. So the prospect is, except for Barbara Page, I think, with the new house, it's all the new stuff on the pumping station here.
Wait, is that again? That whole section is fine without, true?
Yes. So I don't want something. But basically, Congress, there may be one or two houses coming down on East Seneca from Congress that's in, but the line then goes across. It's all, it's whatever the gravity, if you look at the elevation, wherever the gravity feed went.
Yeah, it's totally.
They have, they have approaches about putting in a lift pump up to, up to Sanders Road, but, you know. They have to pay.
Yeah. You have to, you know, you look at, it's kinda like a water district, you have to look at who, how many potential users and what it's gonna cost, and then you gotta tiddy that off.
Okay, so I think we're done.
So they have a meeting. You know what? Thank you for being here and thank you for clapping this like.
Who would've noticed that?
I just want you to know that I think the only other kind, anybody that's been here for a budget session was me. Just, just before.
Yes, she was doing.
Joel Parkin, he came on here.
Did he?
Yeah, and he was, he was very good at all of the processes. But he was the only, he was the only. No, he was, I think he was the only person who would ever come to a budget meeting. Maybe my first year, Bob Rogers.
Bob Rogers.
Oh, I missed that one. Bill Oreski, too. I'm sure, oh, right, because he said he'd be the next meeting in the public. I really see her sense.
These are always coming. The old days.
Who's that?
Don't sound that bad. And his wife.
Wait, this. Ruth, this is.
Yes.
Ruth Scott. Yeah, that was supposed to.
She comes to the state of the village.
And she comes to the village, it's important to get her update.
All right, do you wanna pay some bills, Vicky?
Yeah.
Nope. Sorry.
That's all right. So we have the general fund that strikes totally $182, 499 and 51.
I don't have a question, though. You're obviously.
Go ahead.
Well, break the motion, we will.
I'm gonna do, I pay another 2, 499.51 for the general fund.
Is there a second? Second, all right. Yeah, what would, let's do grant writer that's in there.
That's for Jason.
Oh, is that, that's a good, all right.
Yep.
It's still.
It's still what?
Still waiting.
Really? I don't know why, I feel like it's locked this quarter. For a disco, sorry.
Just trust the angels.
Yeah, payroll is, something else. Um, you know what, there's hard copies right there in front. You know what, there's card copies right there in front of you.
I don't understand, one of them is on the pages, and now it's on page.
It's also still.
Did you say there are?
I don't think you have, you didn't have. I don't believe you have. I paid Bible and mine too, completely, I don't trust you. I don't think I did.
Look at all the dates, guys.
I did, I also got that home, so I don't know. Oh, I was here.
Is everybody?
Yeah, second, fourth, fifth, and sixth.
All right, so we had a first and a second.
Yes. So everybody just check this out.
Okay.
Lot later, girls.
Are we the EMS fund yet?
No, we've been left jacking the gallon.
No, no.
No, that's.
Before we get out of here.
Say about EMS, though.
That is true. Or not there.
Nope.
You all right? I'm good. Everybody's good? Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those who stand.
Aye, Jamie.
In a EMS building, one thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars and eighty-five cents.
I know that we did that.
Wait, that is actually where I have one. So this Brian hasn't done the receivables yet, so that number is wrong, and hopefully he will get them at the end of the week. But if we can do an up to number there, then Vicky can pay them out and shoot them out. Yes, everyone's all right with that.
Oh, it was my idea, and I just found it was.
That's very good.
Okay.
Yes, that's my fault.
So I would move that we pay up to twenty-five thousand for EMS.
I'll second that.
All right, any other discussion?
Just that Vicky's going to update us, because she gets that.
Yeah, 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 absolutely.
Okay, well, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those who stand. Water fund, sixty-five thousand, seven, or four hundred and seventy-six dollars and seventy cents.
I literally pay sixty-five thousand, four hundred and seventy-six dollars and seventy cents for the water fund.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, if not, those in favor say aye.
I agree.
Those who stand, who passes. Sewer fund, two hundred and thirty-six thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars and thirty-two cents.
This is one of the, we'll pay out more, minus five percent. I move that we pay two hundred and thirty-six thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars and thirty-two cents.
Yeah, but are we the sewer fund or the capital?
No, we're the sewer fund. Oh, this is the sewer fund, I, I misspoke. I missed you, I'm sorry. We didn't do that, but you're right. So the twenty, so the two hundred and fifteen thousand is our rent payment, correct?
Who's the second on that?
We all have.
Perfect.
Okay, any other discussion? Not those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Who's standing, who passes? Capital approval, wet water project for fifteen dollars.
This, this one. Where is this paying at, Vicky?
This is where, um, we get, yeah, we get back wire fees when they wire us, I guess they wire us the money.
Okay.
Capital.
I would never come up with that.
We pay them fifteen dollars.
Yeah, we pay them.
They don't give us fifteen dollars. So I don't think we pay fifteen dollars, it's probably capital proof, but probably not.
See, that's a good book, it's like.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those who stand, who passes?
This is the trial sewer plant.
Capital approved, wastewater treatment plant for a hundred and ninety-five thousand, two hundred and twenty-nine dollars and fifty-five cents.
I have to pay them from the wastewater treatment.
I'll second that. You realize there's only one thing, what's been done? Okay.
No more Marty, I heard the whole.
Nine years later.
Okay, all of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those who stand, who passes, and trust the agency for fifteen hundred and fifty-two dollars and seventy-one cents.
This seems really small.
That is because I am having a back and forth between Xellus and the Cetorxium about getting the credit for Brian when dude's going from single to female. Sorry.
I'm sorry, yeah, I got it.
I said I'm sorry.
Good luck, everybody. I think we pay one thousand, five hundred and fifty-two dollars and seventy cents for every shot. I don't know.
Any discussion? Not those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those who stand, who passes? Uh, public, any more, anybody? Public.
One good comment, and what?
Thank you, thank you, Rachel, thank you, Marty, I love my public.
I said the second.
Is it the second?
Before, thanks for Marty, I was actually going to mention. The water rates after two thousand eleven over what?
Yeah, we, I have thirty-four or something, it's less than they have.
Four seventy-five?
Four seventy-five.
So if those rates are down, we'd be at sixty-eight and.
I did look at that. It's actually.
Any need for executives? No, I can't overdo this.
We're just going to complain about the same old thing.
So I'll make a motion to a juror, make sure we do that second. This is not.
Don't do it, bitch.
Come on. All right, all those in favor say aye.
No. I think.
The other, yeah, the other.
It's aye.
And what?
We just walk out, so.
It's domestic taught us all of that two years ago.